Debbie O'Malley to speak to us.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the City Council. Thank you for the privilege of speaking. I know that I've kind of got ahead of a few people, but I do appreciate that opportunity. I wanted to comment on a couple of things. The first thing is, I do want to thank many of you here who were very supportive of the mental health tax that several of you talked about. There are many people, as we mentioned, who have dual diagnosis with mental health and also drug addiction, in some cases, self-medication going on. And the importance of getting resources to those people. Nobody likes to raise taxes, but that's what's before us. We have to have more resources. There's a lot of ideas out there. There's a lot of people who are working very hard on the issues that we're talking about, but there's not enough money and there's not enough resources. And there's not enough money for housing, and housing is also a very big component of this. And, you know, we are in a situation, as we mentioned, that was a crisis situation. Nobody anticipated that because of the very depressed economy, especially in Albuquerque, that we would have, you know, a situation like this. But we have to be proactive, and there are short-term solutions and there are long-term solutions. And I think we need to get engaged in this, and I'm, of course, very excited about the opportunity of working with the City Council and doing those kinds of things. I'm also here in support of the bill to stop, I would say, bulldozing the Bosque. The whole idea of working with the Sierra Club, my understanding is the mayor was working or his people were working with the Sierra Club and other folks to come up with a plan, a consensus plan on how to move forward with some of the changes to the Bosque. And this is my understanding of what happened, is that all of a sudden, the mayor ordered, I guess, the departments or whatever to go in there and start tearing up and building this trail. This was a plan that was not agreed to, and that is incredibly disrespectful. The Bosque belongs to all of us, and it's a living river. I think that's important to understand. This is a living river. It's got its own ecosystem, and I think people appreciate it in Albuquerque. This isn't San Antonio. This isn't a ditch that was made into some sort of feature. This is a living river, and we have to be understanding of how people feel about it, that it has enormous value to us, along with the Aseca system. Let's not mess it up. And I support your bill that you're sponsoring, Council Benton and Council Sanchez, to stop destroying the Bosque. Thank you very much for your opportunity to speak.
We all appreciate the fact that you agree with Commissioner O'Malley. Commissioner O'Malley, before you leave, I think for sure Council Benton would like to say a few words.
Just quickly, Commissioner O'Malley, thanks for coming down to speak, and I appreciate the support with regard to the Bosque. I wanted to just quickly point out, the issue of housing, because when we talk about housing people, I think we're very much talking about what's called supportive housing. So it's not just about getting somebody an apartment or a room that their house. They really need to have that support, and we're talking about, as we were talking about earlier, specific categories of support depending on the individual's needs. And I think when people talk about the proposed tax, I've heard that there isn't a plan. Well, I would venture, I would really venture to disagree on that. With Council Winters and myself sponsored the task force, it came out clearly delineating, and this wasn't new information, I mean, as to the need, but that task force also clearly delineated the cost of such a program. And we know that it's going to involve local funding. We also need help from the state, and there are people working out of the state as we sit right now. And, of course, it includes the city programs where we spend millions and millions of dollars every year, but we need to focus them better. So, really appreciate you coming down.
Thank you, and I'm glad that you mentioned that. I think a lot of people think, well, you just put a family in a house, you put a -- that's important that people have safe shelter. But, you know, there's also the issue of continuum of care, and that's the other thing that has come up as a result of our conversations, also with the city and the county, and some of you are, as mentioned, on the task force, is that we need a continuum of care, and you need to have those supportive wraparound services, or people won't be successful. And putting people in jail is not the solution. We have, I don't know how many people that we've had that are, you know, we're trying to provide mental health services in the jail. That's expensive and it's not working. So we're looking at, you know, how do we basically move those resources and really start, you know, to, I think, take, deal with this problem? And as someone's mentioned, I think Commissioner Penney may, we're better than this, and we are better than this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Please, we appreciate, appreciate your support. I appreciate all of you for expressing your support for Commissioner O'Malley. Now we are on list of speakers. We have Barbara Grothas, followed by Nora Anaya, and Vincent Lewis. Barbara Grothas.
Barbara's not here, so she asked me to read her statement.
All right. We'll start the timing.
Structural economic problems are destroying the United States. The new economy, as our president calls it, has created the opportunity for 1,000 super-rich individuals to accumulate more money than the rest of us combined. The little people bailed out the bankers who made off with our homes and pensions. We are jailing more people than any country in the world, and yet our problems increase unabated. Albuquerque is the shame of New Mexico. Denial of reality is the official policy of the mayor. Everyone else can see the naked betrayals in his crude lawlessness. The homeless are preyed upon by our police, and the mayor chases them hither and yon. Enough is enough. The homeless are the gay, lesbian, and transgender children thrown out by Christian families from the churches in your district, Councilor Jones. The homeless are veterans betrayed by our government over and over and who are suffering and dying in alleys and on the streets while patriotic neighbors fly fags in your district, Councilor Lewis. The homeless are substance abusers from families you blame in the South Valley and families you don't blame in your neighborhoods, Councilor Harris. The homeless are children who were born with disabilities our schools could not fix and to families who did not have resources to hire caregivers and then became overwhelmed in your neighborhoods, Councilor Winter. These are the castaways who have been given their last chance. Many have been given tough love and are falling through the responsibilities. Now they're the responsibility of no one. We need a permanent location in our city. Other cities do it. We can do this. And I'm telling you all, you give us a piece of land in this city, there are some organizations right here who will maintain that and take care of these people, because our city needs to do this. Give us a piece of dirt, we'll handle it.
Ma'am, ma'am, could we have your name for the record? All right.
Kathy Brown with ABQ Justice.
Next speaker is Nora Anaya, followed by Vincent Lewis, followed by Emma Sandoval.
My name is Nora Tachias Anaya. Mr. Gardunio, Councilman Gardunio, and Council, I need to explain some things that have been heavy on my heart, trying to figure out some solutions. Someone told me why the city should be responsible for the crisis of the homeless. Well, in my educated opinion, after doing research and speaking to my homeless, I'm an advocate, the city is responsible for making them homeless. And you keep tearing the motels down. Please stop. That would be one of the very important things to do. Thirty years they've been home, there's been a homeless sightings all over Barrelos. I'm a Barreleño. I've lived there, born and raised. I'm not living there now, but if I can find me a place, I will move there. Facts, it's all intertwined. I believe a human humane society should be started now. Homeless from nuisance abatements? People had homes. They got kicked out for their children doing wrong. That's not right. That needs to stop. Homeless from the floods in the area of Barrelos? It wasn't necessarily the floods. It was the two minutes that are up? Oh, my gosh, I better go fast.
You still have 30 seconds.
Floods, homeless from the jail? There's a slew of people coming from jail now, and they are going to be the next homeless. Please understand, minor inflections, arrests, need to be stopped. I have a slew of things I need to tell you, and I need to be involved also when you have your meetings, because we're living in the streets with them. We are watching over them. We are not going to waver. We are going to stay, and we are going to help them, because
Thank you.
we're the Bleeding Hearts Club.
Thank you, Ms. Anaya. Just to remind you again, the light goes on, you have two minutes, bell and the yellow light will come on, meaning you have 30 seconds, and then the red light will come on. That means your time is up.
Vincent Lewis.
Mr. Vincent Lewis.
Vincent, St. Vincent, SWOP Southwest Organizing Project, also a Barreleño. Two weeks now, we've been working with the homeless out there, Tent City, also now Doug Camp Faith. There's been a lot of immediate, you know, transition and progress. You know, we've got motel vouchers. We've got these guys placed in motels, and, you know, people are out there feeding them and stuff like that, but it's not enough. And so, you know, we had a meeting yesterday, you know, I guess, service providers of the city and then also from around the state, and consensus is calling for a long-term Tent City, Camp Faith. And members of SWOP and ABQ Justice and different advocates are, you know, that's what they're asking for, this piece of dirt, so that we can work on it based on Las Cruces's format. I think we can make that work. I've never once seen Mr. Montano down there, and I want to make that clear. And in the beginning, you said there's less cats on the street. Well, there are less cats on the street, but there's more homeless on the street. Let's see, we don't have a lot of time to do this, and I need a lot more than two minutes, so I'm asking that you can call me back for a presentation rather than two minutes, if you can do that for me, please. Right now, the people that are in the motels, we're going out every day, and we're making sure that they get long-term help. We're getting them on Medicaid. We're getting them help as far as methadone and buprenorphine programs, so that we're addressing why they're homeless. We're directing them in the right direction as far as mental health services and stuff like that. Well, that being said, I'm just saying that we need the city to provide a lot so that we can build a tent city based on the Las Cruces model. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Vincent. Just a second. Mr. Lewis? Mr. Lewis?
Thanks for coming to speak, Vincent, and thanks for attending the meeting yesterday with those folks. And I just kind of reiterate something that I heard at that meeting. Father Rusty Smith has been working, you know, with the community for a long, long time, and to me is one of the real thought leaders, if you will. And I found it really interesting, you know, what he said, that when he first heard the idea of a tent, you know, formal tent camp of what we're talking about, he was opposed to it. But he's really come around to realize exactly what he stated, that we do need to find a location. You know, there's a specific segment that needs this short-term solution while we work on long-term solutions. So that was really, I was impressed by that, because I had heard him say in the past that he wasn't sure that that was the answer, but he realized now that that is something we need to work together and create it. So, thanks for your advocacy.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Next is Emma Sandoval, Michael Jensen, and Camila Feibelmann.
Mr. President, Councilmembers, my name is Emma Sandoval, and I'm the lead organizer with the Southwest Organizing Project. Thank you for the chance to discuss an issue that is vital to the soul of our city. At the Southwest Organizing Project, we've been scrambling to work with our brothers and sisters enduring homelessness at the Camp Faith, because whether they were evicted from the First Street site or the AP site in Barrelos, the deeper issue is that what we are providing as a city is not cutting it. We call on the city of Albuquerque to work with groups like St. Martin's to develop a Camp Faith on the city of Albuquerque land where residents can be dignified and safe, just like the city of Las Cruces. We also urge to be considered in the council's move, we also urge to be, we also urge you to reconsider the council's move four years ago to disseminate the Workforce Housing Trust Fund, which helped to fund buildings like the 702nd Street Building, which provided both housing for near-homeless individuals and also helped them towards recovery. The fund was a far bigger priority in previous city councils, providing over $8 million a bond cycle for affordable housing. And now that's been cut to $2.4 million for the upcoming cycle to be put before voters, and as a result, we're seeing a very clear slowdown in affordable housing projects to address homelessness and the lack of access to workforce housing, especially in light of projects like the Regional Sports Complex on 118th Street. We've got some serious work to do to take care of our city's score. The people of Camp Faith and those at the Southwest Organizing Project believe that our city is better than this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sandoval. Next, Michael Jensen, followed by Camila Feibelmann and Richard Barish.
Hello, my name is Michael Jensen. I'm the Middle Rio Grande Urban Waters Ambassador for the Urban Waters Federal Partnership. I also sit on the Open Space Advisory Board. I want to make it clear, I'm speaking for myself tonight, not for those agencies. However, I do know that Open Space and the Advisory Board are repeatedly frustrated by the fact that agencies that do work in the Bosque don't consult fully and completely with them on the scope and scale of their work. So it's kind of disconcerting that the mayor initiated a project that did not consult with Middle Rio Grande Conservancy District over a special use permit. I myself have personally gotten two of those to collect water samples on conservancy property with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, or with the New Mexico Environment Department Service for Equality Bureau over things relevant to their purview. And most importantly, because this area of the project is larger than one acre of disturbed land, they failed to consult with the EPA Region 6 Office in Dallas for a National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit. They didn't do a notice of intent under the Construction General Permit. So they're technically in violation there. As I said, this failure to consult is setting a bad precedent for the Open Space and the city to go back to some of these same agencies and fault them for not consulting adequately. And I'm sort of reminded of Councilor Sanchez's effort last year to reaffirm the Bosque Action Plan, which called for better consultation among all the agencies doing work, something that was vetoed by the mayor. And lastly, talking to the contractor and other people in the city, I understand there's a bridge being priced out, or maybe it already has, to go over the siphon, and I hope there's consolation about that.
Mr. Jensen, thank you very much. Thank you. Next is Camila Feibelmann, followed by Richard Barish, followed by Gail Garber.
Mr. President, I'm Camila Feibelmann, a Director of the Rio Grande Chapter of the Sierra Club, which represents 4,000 members in the Albuquerque area. I think it's good to just remember what the Bosque is all about. Albuquerque is one of the only cities that's protected the forested area along its river in the entire country. We have the largest cottonwood forest in the entire country. So this is a really special place, and our Bosque Action Team is dedicated to increasing access to it, whether it's on the east side or on the west side, but decreasing the harm so that we can all enjoy seeing bird life, wildlife, and enjoying a really unique river. We got off to a pretty rough start with the city on the Rio Grande Vision. They put the project out to Decker Parish and Sabatini that came back with a real manicured plan. This was going to be kind of an urban park rather than the natural place that it is. The city put on public hearings in September of 2013. 400 people showed up, and there was a resounding no, this isn't what we want. Now, to the city's credit, they slowed down and they really started listening. The plan between Central and I-40 was something that we met multiple times with them on. We went on walks with the city. And last Monday, the ninth, we received from city employees three maps with three options, asking for our feedback for the public process. On Tuesday, we went down there to check out the area, look at the map, look at the area, and they had started work with heavy machinery. Now, my job is to get the public to engage in the public process and trust the city, say, yeah, we're willing to work with these guys. So those of you who are here in support of the Bosque and engaged in that process, please stand up. These are the folks that I convinced to engage with the city. On Tuesday, that trust was bulldozed. Thank you.
Your time is up. However, Ms. Feibelmann, before you leave, Council Benton, Council Benton has a question.
Camilla, thank you for speaking. So I had the impression, and correct me if I'm wrong, that there had been a lot of progress towards these three final plans, I suppose, and also was in the impression that there was going to be a limited number of more meetings and a decision made on that.
I think we were on two weeks from a consensus decision with the city. I mean, I really applaud the city. We were getting there. We were looking at maps together. They were asking for our feedback. We gave on the concept of a wider trail in certain areas, but we asked especially that the area at the waterfront be protected, because that's sort of the most sensitive area. It's area for nesting. But that area got plowed through to the tune of eight feet. The ultimate trail will probably be six feet, but the bed is eight feet. Now, I have contacted the mayor's office and Ms. Barbara Taylor not less than five times and haven't heard a word back. So, you know, we were getting emails with maps on Monday and no response on Tuesday.
Thank you, Ms. Feibelmann.
We would like to continue working with the city. We're happy to start over.
Thank you very much. Richard Barish, followed by Gail Garber, followed by Diana Mays.
Mr. President, Councilors, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Just to follow up on Council Benton's question, I am 100% sure that if we had been able to continue with that process, that we would have come to a consensus plan that everybody could have agreed to for the trail that is in the Bosque. It would have been a multi-use trail. It would not have had as heavy a footprint in the Bosque as the trail that's being constructed now, but we would have come to a consensus option that could have been considered and could have been built. Unfortunately, because the mayor went in there and, or I'm not exactly sure of the process, but because that trail was plowed through the Bosque, that ability to come to a consensus was cut off. The disagreement in this case, I think, really is about, you know, what our vision for the Rio Grande Valley State Park and the Bosque is. Is the Bosque going to be a city park with developed features, where when you go there, it feels more like you're in a city park? Or is it going to be a natural space where you can go to enjoy the beauty of the river and the cottonwoods and the birds, and where you feel more like you're in a natural space? That's what I think the real question is here. The trail that is being constructed now is going to be an obvious developed feature in the Bosque. It will be of a uniform width. It will be a smooth kind of surface, a perfectly level surface, kind of a groomed surface, covered in crusher fines that are different than the surrounding soil, and it will be an obvious developed feature. It will be out of character with what the Bosque really is. The thing that makes the Bosque a special and unique place, a place that so many people love, is that it is a place right within the city where you can go and enjoy nature. Projects in the Bosque should preserve this natural character. The trail that's being built now does not do that.
Thank you, Mr. Barish. Gail Garber, followed by Diana Mays, followed by Jennifer Bunce. Before you start, if I may, remind folks, you know, we'll get through this a lot quicker. I know everyone that has spoken has made some really good points, but if we could keep the applause down, I realize and I understand your enthusiasm, but let's get through this as quickly as we can, because we want to hear from everyone. Thank you. Gail Garber, followed by Diana Mays, followed by Jennifer Bunce.
Thank you, Mr. President and Councilors. My name is Gail Garber, and I am the Director of Hawks Aloft here in Albuquerque. We've been a nonprofit for 21 years. We've monitored birds in the Bosque since 2004, from Rio Rancho to La Jolla State Game Refuge. And I want to say, talk about a tale of three cities. So our data show us that Rio Rancho, with a wide crusher fine trail on the riverside, similar to that's being installed now in the city of Albuquerque, supports the lowest density of all habitats in the riparian zone of all 70 miles. It's even less than pure stands of salt cedar. The Corral's Bosque, on the other hand, has the highest density of birds and variety of species of all habitats within the entire reach, particularly in areas along the riverbank where the bank has been lowered and they've planted willow swales. Just last spring, one year after they did their riparian restoration, we found 15 willow flycatchers, an endangered species, on the first survey of the year. This is an astounding number, not even found in pristine habitat in the core of the range. Corral's has been recognized as an important bird area by Audubon Society. It was, the Bosque of Corral's was featured in New Mexico Magazine. We've collaborated with the city of Albuquerque throughout the process and attended the walks. One of our recent suggestions to Open Space was to create similar patches with lowered banks and willow swales immediately adjacent to the river where the trail is now being expanded. We even included funding suggestions to help establish a premier wetland and riparian woodland in the midst of the city. The river's edge is the most --
Thank you. Thank you very much. Diana Mays, followed by Jennifer Bunce, followed by Don Schrader.
Mr. President, Councilmembers, my name is Diana Mays, and I'm a member with Olay. I'm here today to urge you guys to vote yes for R. 169, in the hopes that my daughter will be able to walk through the Bosque in its natural habitat the way I was when I was growing up. I want her to be able to pave through the Bosque on the dirt paths that thousands of people before us paved, not on a crusher fine that's essentially damaging our ecosystem. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Jennifer Bunce, followed by Don Schrader, followed by Father Frank Quintana.
Mr. President, Councilors, I come before you tonight, and I want to first thank Councilors Sanchez and Benton for introducing this legislation. And I want to also urge the rest of you to do the right thing later when you vote. We need to stand up for a lot of things in this city, and I think that the legislation concerning the Bosque is one of many. We need to be better than we are, and we need to show, we need leadership shown from City Council, because to a lot of us, it's not coming from City Hall at this time. I'm here also to say that on behalf of cyclists, with regard to Bosque plans and improvements, that crusher fines may or may not be good for any wheeled vehicles. They can turn out to be a relatively good surface to ride on or to have a wheelchair or a stroller, but too often, they don't. And so without really understanding what this plan is about, what's going on, we're not supportive of it, because all too often, it makes riding impossible. And it wouldn't be conducive to a wheelchair. They run about the same kind of a tire and a wheel that a bicycle, a road bicycle, does. And so I want you to consider that as well, that it may be a bit disingenuous to say that these improvements are for these populations. To my knowledge, the Greater Albuquerque Bicycle Committee hasn't been consulted about this plan either, so there's been no bicycle input, to my knowledge, about going forward with this crusher fine situation. And last, you know, I'm an Albuquerque native. The Bosque has been a really unique and beautiful part of my time in the city, and we need to protect it. We need to protect it in its natural state and not make it into a theme park. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Don Schrader, followed by Father Frank Quintana, followed by Ilse Beal. Don Schrader, followed by Father Frank Quintana, followed by Ilse Beal.
I lived well all of 2014 on $4,923 for my total expenses, rent, food, et cetera. I enjoy living simply and healthy on less than half the U.S. poverty level and less than half the federal income taxable level for me as a single person. I buy nothing at Walmart, McDonald's, or large shopping malls. I shop at yard sales, thrift stores, flea market. I write down every penny I spend every day and add it up. A wonderful discipline. Most of the money most USAans spend is for crap no one needs. I am glad I own no car, no TV, no refrigerator, no cooking stove, no gun, no washer dryer, no computer. I'm glad I own no big house, no cellphone, no air conditioner, no charge account, no credit or debit cards, no jet travel, no business suit. I would not keep these things if you give them to me free. I'm glad I consume no booze, no cigarettes, no junk food, no prescription drugs, no illegal drugs, no meat, no dairy, no cooked food. Freedom for me is not having and not wanting these things I do not need. I enjoy living simply and healthy.
Thank you, Schrader. Father Frank Quintana, followed by Ilse Beal, followed by Dinah Vargas.
Mr. President, esteemed councilors, I'm a new citizen to Albuquerque, and as a new citizen, I went to the council's website to just get some information in preparation for addressing you tonight. And one thing that I read was very impressive to me, that part of your mission statement, I guess you would call it, is that you have the legislative authority to adopt ordinances and resolutions conducive to the welfare of the people of the city, and that this issue of homelessness that we're addressing is not being laid on the community alone, but you're willing to shoulder that with us. So, thank you for that. I speak to you today as a person who has worked on the issue of homelessness in Denver. I provided housing for people living with HIV/AIDS, with supportive services, with counseling, medical help. All that was in place. So, I know that it can be done and that we, and that a city that can provide lovely, beautiful dog parks can certainly provide housing for our brothers and sisters who have a need. The greatness of a city rests upon its regard for the least empowered, the least abled, and the least healthy. The greatness of a city rests upon the dignity and well-being afforded to all of its citizens. The ideals of our heritage and the legacy that we must leave our children must not be found in monuments or lighted buildings or economic development or land development, but our priorities must first lie in the humane and dignified existence of the citizens of this city. Our first priority should be a society, to a society, to a city, and to a neighborhood should be human life, and nothing is more important than the individual and their dignity.
Thank you, Father. Next is Ilse Beal, followed by Dinah Vargas, followed by Rob Chavez.
It's really good to hear that you mentioned and spoke about homelessness tonight, and also that you spoke about Abba Boyd. So, Abba Boyd has, it's almost a year since he's been killed. You also mentioned that some people are wary of going into shelters, making use of the services because they don't trust the system. So, I'm a member of ABQ Justice. Our group has been working with the people of Ten Cities since October. We have at times spent nights there. Contrary to some councilors, we actually have been working there. We are working, wanting to work with the city. Problem is that we don't always see that the city wants to work with us. And I hear your frustration when you say that people say, "Oh, the city's not doing anything." Problem is, if you take it, Abba Boyd was killed a year ago. He wasn't the first homeless person in this city. This is a very old problem. Camp Faith is also not the only settlement of its kind here in the city. There are several others. So, I am wondering why we are now talking about it now that it has already reached crisis proportions. You said it correctly. It is crisis proportions. So, why are we now talking about it? Why didn't we have a proper, comprehensive plan? So, please, the people have already been dispersed again, so out of sight, out of mind, but please, just make sure that there is now a comprehensive plan for the next time because the next time is going to come. It's certain.
Thank you, Beal. Next is Dinah Vargas, followed by Rob Chavez, followed by Tad Neminski.
Good evening, President Gardner, members of city council. When we let people suffer beyond humane conditions, it is a reflection of our own ability to improve. New Mexico is dead last, and I'm almost thinking by design. There is a reason why there are 3,000 families on a waiting list, because New Mexico is dead last. I have been here. I am a native. I am a Bucania original. I am. And the whole time that I have been here, and it's been many decades, I've never seen our banner advance, and I want to know why. We are dead last from poverty, and we are first in police violence. We are losing jobs. We have a mayor who lies about us and lies to us. We have failed leadership, and I don't know why. New Mexico is dead last, and the only other state that comes before us is some hillbilly state like Mississippi, who hung black people, and we're one of the last to abolish slavery. Non-progressive, they are, not were, but are, and yet we still stand before you in struggles year after year, decade after decade. It's like the season of the crop, and it's our people doing the picking in the valley of the dogs. It's our people that we let starve, and I don't know why. I don't know if you can talk to the mayor and ask him to do something. Perhaps Robert Perry can because he has the ear of the mayor, and I have reserved, in spite of what I have heard about him, because I have faith that someday, he will maybe lead this city because nobody else is. So, the last resort, Rob Perry. New Mexico is dead last. New Mexico is indeed dead last. They are fracking our lands. I mean, who is against Mother Earth legitimately? The Bosque, failing schools from teachers, and the list goes on and on. They're going to bust our unions, too.
Thank you, Ms. Vargas. Next is Rob Chavez, followed by Tad Neminski, followed by Victor Warbin.
Mr. President and councilors, thank you for the opportunity. I want to focus on the extremely flawed process leading up to these outrageous actions instigated by the mayor. The Bosque Action Team, as was earlier stated, mailed out, was mailed out different options on this project and how to proceed, but almost immediately, the Leescape's Company began the destruction work on the Bosque Trail. It was almost like a deliberate insult. The work actually began on last Monday, on April, February the 9th, but even the city's open space staff didn't learn about it until the next day. Ms. Barbara Taylor, the new director, brand new director of Parks and Recreation, recklessly neglected to even advise the MRGCD, the Rio Grande Conservancy District, or the EPA that she was planning this work, even though she was obligated to do so. She told me that there has already been enough public input and that she will move forward with this hasty, ill-conceived, and uncalled-for project. Because of this badly breached trust, which I think she, as I said before, the instigation of the mayor has caused, I call on Ms. Barbara Taylor to resign as Director of Parks and Recreation for the city of Albuquerque. And if she refuses to do so, I implore the city council to facilitate her resignation or removal as director. Albuquerque and the Bosque deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. Next is Tad Neminski, followed by Victor Warbin, followed by Kathleen Cates.
My name, Tad Neminski. I guess you're wondering what is displayed. I believe that that's came from the $1 million sidewalk, which is a city build that between bus on the first street, between the bus station and city property way up to Pacific. Now, I spent about three weeks with others, tried to separate, advocate people, homeless people in Ten Cities. Well, city evicted, and that's, I knew it something not right before this eviction even started. That's moving, that won't solve problem because three days, seven days, and et cetera, even give ticket to Texas. Well, those people stay until eviction came through. After three days, we moved, helped them move to new location. That time, immediate in three days, city dumped up anywhere between 100 to 200 tons of this rock, this size. I knew it something not right. Well, people kept asking me, and I said, "I guess because they don't want to camp homeless people in there." Absolutely, that makes sense. Then, let's go to... That time, I done research. Well, my time running out.
Thank you, Ms. Neminski. Next is Victor Warbin, followed by Kathleen Cates, followed by David Parsons.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, councilors. I come to speak in support of the Bosque and to thank Isaac Benton for putting this issue in front of the council tonight. First of all, what's being built there, it's a road. It's an ugly gravel road, and the work that's been done in the past few days has done more destruction to the Bosque than all of the traffic, probably for millennia, over what are these so-called rogue paths. And I think that term is being used by the mayor to make it sound like, you know, terrible things are going on and that paths are being developed willy-nilly through the Bosque. I see all manner of people, bicycles, strollers, on the current path. There is no lack of access for anybody, and the Bosque is beautiful as is, and this road that is being built is just ugly. It feels bad under the feet. The cyclists are saying that they don't think it's going to be any good for them and therefore not any good for people in wheelchairs. And it occurs to me, considering the other issue that's been being spoken about this evening, what a waste. This city is spending money to destroy the Bosque while people are homeless and starving.
Next is Kathleen Cates, followed by David Parsons, followed by Sarita Strong.
Thank you, Mr. President and council. My name is Kathleen Cates, and I am the CEO of Life Roots. We're a nonprofit that have been serving the central New Mexico for over 50 years, providing services to people with disabilities from birth throughout life. Accessibility is a big issue in our area, especially in the outdoor spaces, playgrounds, sports fields, and nature trails. Our citizens with disabilities continue to wait to enjoy the environmental areas. I, too, have had issues with Parks and Rec's inability to bring community partners to the decision table before implementing designs. I am here because 169 was presented so quickly that representative, representation from the disabled community could not be mobilized. We understand the unique and wonder of the Bosque. We want all of our citizens to enjoy its wonder. I respectfully ask the council to require a partnership with the community and Parks and Rec, who too often are meeting the legal compliance requirements without considering that we are all serving the same community, central New Mexico. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathleen. Next is David Parsons, followed by Sarita Strong, followed by Oscar Simpson.
David had to leave. He asked me to read his first paragraph and give the second half to Maya.
All right.
Okay. David writes, "I am one of many citizens who is outraged by your premature decision to begin trail construction work in the Bosque before finishing a legitimate public review. That work could have been completed in a more ecologically friendly way if you had let the review process run its course. For example, the most biologically and ecologically sensitive areas are immediately adjacent to the river, the riparian zone. The southwest has already lost about 70% of its biologically rich and productive riparian zones. We should be restoring, not destroying, our precious riparian zones. Yet, a portion of the newly bladed trail runs adjacent to the river. This is ecologically unacceptable." And this is Maya. She's six. She goes to Hubert Humphrey Elementary.
Welcome, Maya.
Hi.
Do you want to say what you have to say? You ready? Take a deep breath.
I want to keep the Bosque because it's special. I want to build roads around the river, could help wildlife.
And what do you want to be when you grow up?
An animal rescuer.
Great.
Thank you, Maya. Ms. Feibelmann, thank you very much. Councilor Penya.
Ms. Feibelmann?
Ms. Feibelmann. And Maya?
No, just Ms. Feibelmann.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, she'd be a nice addition.
She'll keep you company.
Well, I just want to say, good job, Maya. And Ms. Feibelmann, I just had a couple of questions. When you spoke earlier, you had said that you were two weeks away from consensus. So, I'm hearing a lot of different things here tonight, like that the crusher fine is not an acceptable, an acceptable material for the Bosque, but it seems as though maybe that was something that you had identified as being acceptable. What were, what, what's the difference between the two weeks coming from consensus? I hear, is it going to be a developed park, a trail adjacent to the riverbed, and then I've heard others talk about the crusher fine?
You know, I think that the biggest issue is one of nuance. The trail that was plowed through last week is a standard eight-foot-wide trail bed for a six-foot-wide trail, and I've walked the whole thing from Central to I-40. And what it doesn't do is sort of pay attention to each particular system. So, what Dr. Parsons is saying is the riparian area right in front of the river is the most sensitive. So, what we were talking about with the city is, if you are feeling very insistent on a multi-use trail, let's do that where it's set back from the riverfront. Let's do it in a way that the bikes aren't going to spook the horses. If it's going to be an ADA trail, which we highly favor, let's make sure to consult the community first and see what a good distance from parking to riverfront is for somebody in a wheelchair. And what we talked about was keeping a very narrow trail system... And what we talked about was keeping a very narrow trail system in the riparian area. Forest Service documents show that you can have quite a narrow trail that's still wheelchair accessible, but keep the impacts low on nesting areas that are closest to the river. So, you know, on Monday, when we got these three maps, the city was sort of saying, these are three maps with a series of options that we'd like your feedback on and that we could take to public comment. So when you put those three options up for public review, the different communities can come in and say, the scientists can say, six foot wide in front of the river doesn't work. The ADA community can come in and say, crusher fine's okay, but this works better. And all of that feedback, we would have gotten through a public comment period that we were expecting from the city.
Okay. So really, the trail, from my understanding, went from six feet to larger, and it was an existing trail. So this six-foot trail that's adjacent to the river was already there?
It was a small, narrow footpath. So let's say that this is the narrow footpath. What's there now is like this. So it's the, the area literally two to three feet from the river is totally exposed. It's been graded and leveled, and it is absolutely not what we would have recommended from a scientific standpoint. And that's what we were talking about with the city. If you're going to insist on a wide trail, where can we do that with low impact? And how can we protect the riverfront riparian zone? If that makes sense?
Well, it does. I mean, the trail was already there. And for me, part of the struggle that I have is that I've made this very clear before when I've talked with folks from the Sierra Club, is that, you know, the river is a precious resource. And, you know, the initial plan that was out there, I totally was opposed to it when we talked about making it an urban park. I think the administration pulled back, and they really listened to, to the community and really felt that you guys were, you know, everybody was working together. For me, and as I mentioned, talking about this before, is that I have a, I have a family member who has developmental disabilities, and I have another individual who's in a wheelchair. And unfortunately, for years and years, us as a family, we go down to the river very often. We ride our bikes or we go on the trails. And when we walk in the Bosque, it's been very, I've felt for years, it has been very safe, unsafe. It's not somewhere where I could take my brother or, or this other individual who's in a wheelchair. So, you know, I was really hopeful that, because you said you were two weeks away from consensus, that, you know, the crusher fine must have been something that was identified as an acceptable material. And, and the fact that the trail was already there, it just, I'm really appreciative that the option one was selected because there was other options where they would just create new trails. And I had, as I had mentioned before, a lot of, a lot of the trails that were there were just made because you couldn't really find your way around there. So you kind of, and really, that was harming the environment tremendously, I believed. But, so I just wanted to ask what really kept you away from the two weeks from consensus and what made such a drastic change?
Well, it's just such an odd thing. I mean, we got these three maps asking for feedback from the city, from the staff at the Open Space Department on Monday, asking for our feedback. And when we went down on Tuesday and found that the work had already been starting, we stopped getting any phone calls back. So we understood that we were at the table together, and we understood that the three maps that we had been sent were going to be the basis for the last part of the conversation. We had looked at the maps that Monday night at the Bosque Action Team meeting. There was a feeling that a combination of options one and two would be the best way to move forward. We really agree with the idea of using existing trails, but to turn a footpath into an eight-foot wide bed and a six-foot wide trail in the most sensitive area is just not appropriate. The other thing that we're concerned about is that in no document, in no map, and in no discussion with the city, was this trail ever identified as a possible ADA trail. Now, it might be a great ADA trail, and we'd like to see functional ADA trails within the Bosque. But as the woman who spoke before me said, you really have to get members of the ADA community together to see what's needed and what works. There's a difference between pushing an elderly relative in a wheelchair and trying to self-propel. The person who will speak after me is a member of the Bosque Action Team. She did what I understand to be some of the only studies of what ADA accessibility to the Bosque would look like, and was the person bringing this to the city. So I think what you'll find right now is that for us, we have wanted to be at the table. We commend the city for starting over. We want to see increased accessibility, but we want to do it the right way. One thing that David Parsons said in his document here is, you know, why rush this in before nesting season? Why not take this period of time that we have now to really look at the three options and do the proper option that works for most parties after nesting season so that we're not rushing and making mistakes along the way?
Counselor Penya.
Mr. President, without any, any outbursts, I'd just like to ask Mr. Montano. So where are we with this? I mean, is there any way to come to some agreement in terms of how we address the concerns of the community? Because two weeks out seems, you know, a pretty relatively short period of time to arrive at consensus. So, and it seems as though much of the consensus had been, been made. So if you can just kind of add...
Sure. Mr. President, Counselor Penya, Mr. Rude is actually going to take a stab at that.
Thank you, Counselor. President Gardunio and Counselor Penya for the question. We have gone through a two and a half year process on this project, and through that process, I believe we had come to a consensus where we felt, originally it was just going to be a 10-foot trail. It was going to be a longer portion of it along the river. That had been reduced to a six-foot trail along an existing footpath. I think a lot of the consensus already occurred. So really, you know, every time you get to the point, we'd already delayed a year, last year, outside of the migrating bird season for this environmental study that came back positive, saying we should be in the Bosque doing, it is a man-made environment that we need to continue to maintain that way. And, and we just continue to get delays, whether it's two hours, two days, two weeks, two months, another two years. It's a little disingenuous to say we're going to come to consensus because it wasn't tracking that way.
Counselor Penya.
Mr. President, Counselor Penya, may I respond?
Mr. President, yes, sure.
On September 13th, 400 people turned out to a public hearing regarding the city's proposal. I have rarely seen such a turnout to a public hearing, and there was a resounding no to the proposal of broad, wide trails through the Bosque. People run into each other, the multiple uses don't work together, and as Gail Garber said, it's bad for bird populations. The city invited us to a new process, and we appreciated that. But you don't tell us to sit down with you at the table and after we leave slam the door behind us. We're happy to continue working with the city. We were almost there with Open Space staff. So when this idea that there have been two years of public meetings, well, the first half of that didn't consult organizations that actually work with the Bosque, with, with the public. The second half was an improved process, and we really appreciate that. But to imply that there's been a two-year process with deep consultation is just not true.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, President, Counselor.
Counselor Penya, thank you, Ms. Feibleman. Next is Sarita String, followed by Oscar Simpson, followed by Chad Huber.
Thank you, Mr. President and councilors. I, I am, my name's Sarita String, and I'm a member of the Bosque Action Team. I'm also the leader of the Bosquitos, which is the group of the Bosque Action Team that volunteers to take children and families at no cost to the Bosque. We've collaborated with the Native Plant Society, the Biopark Aquarium, the Bosque Eco-Monitoring Project. In addition to that, I personally have a background in teaching people with physical disabilities who've become partially paralyzed due to stroke, spinal cord injury, or other cause, how to return to community mobility. For example, after someone's had a spinal cord injury, I teach them how to use a public restroom again, how to go grocery shopping. I recently, well, I'm finishing occupational therapy graduate school, and I decided for my volunteer project to do a study on ADA access to the Bosque, which I started over a year ago. And it's a, I went to every single space in the Bosque. And I also surveyed a number of people, 12 people who are wheelchair users, who, maybe, Camilla, you could just flip through some of the work, who would like to use the Bosque. The Bosque Action Team greatly supports the ADA community. I believe the ADA community has not been consulted. I've had people in the ADA community who I asked to help with this survey, calling me saying, why are we not being consulted? I also don't think that anyone who I worked with, who's a wheelchair user, wanted the trail to go through the sensitive, most sensitive riparian areas.
Sarita, your time is up.
Thank you.
Excuse me, before you leave, Counselor Benton.
Quick questions, Sarita. In, in my work as an architect over the years, the Governor's Committee for Concerns of the Handicap, which is now called something else, that was the old name, but, you know, have, over the years, approved crusher fines, compacted, stabilized crusher fines as an accessible surface. But I, I wonder if you would comment, those, I think, when they analyze that, that's for walking. This is a multi-use path, so this is going to have horse hooves and bicycle tires, etc., on that same surface. And I wondered if that was anything you would encounter.
Honestly, I've heard a variety of opinions on what trail surfaces would be the best. I don't personally know. I think that asking a group of people who are regular wheelchair users to go out and try out different surfaces who live in Albuquerque and would be using the Bosque would be the most prudent thing to do. I also can say that there are a lot of complaints of the people that I spoke with who do use wheelchairs in terms of things like, why is there this beautiful paved path from the Rio Grande Nature Center? Phenomenal. The Aldo Leopold Trail is, it's totally paved, it goes through the Bosque. Why can they not get over the levee? There's no way for them to get over their levee and self-propel. And why does that trail not go all the way to the river when it's so close? Why, some of the people that I talked to who do use wheelchairs tried to go to the boardwalk that's just south of Central at this time and got stuck in sand pits? So I think that some of the areas that already have some access don't really have access, if that makes sense. And I think that's another reason to not jump into doing this project immediately. As the person who was representing the disability community here earlier, I think there needs to be more outreach. And I feel like, you know, the Bosque Action Team to do a hundred-hour study to try and reach out as volunteers, I think we really care and we love the Bosque, and we want people of all abilities to be able to enjoy the Bosque. And I don't think that has to mean that we have to also go into the most sensitive nesting grounds.
Thank you, Ms. String.
And the study is on our website.
Thank you. Next is Oscar Simpson, followed by Chad Huber, followed by Steve Chavez.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the city councilors. My name is Oscar Simpson. I represent a couple of groups. I represent the Back Country Horsemen of New Mexico, and I represent the Back Country Hunters of New Mexico. The city's response tonight is a typical example of why we need to stop this project. You have no public process. The city makes arbitrary, arbitrary decisions on what is good and what is suitable. The public process has failed. They've made lots of promises. I've been watching this stuff for the last two, two years. I was also on Secretary Salazar Task Force to evaluate a trail from Cochitie down to Elephant Mute Lake. We had lots of public process, lots of expertise. The city of Albuquerque has advocated the whole process, and we make numerous processes. Therefore, that's why I support Resolution 15169. And Senator Isaac Benton, I'm your constituent, and I support this very much, and I hope the rest of the city council follows this through. The city advocated its process, and that's the reason why you need to stop this. They need to start all over. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Next is Chad Huber, followed by Steve Chavez, followed by Sally Beers.
Good evening, Mr. President. Council members, thank you for hearing my words tonight. I wanted to just add my voice to the many voices that have already spoken this evening. You know, I've observed over the, the last few weeks that as, as that strip of First Street where the Tent City was, was cleared in the name of building an innovation trail, and as the Bosque was bulldozed in the name of innovation in our city, that I wanted to speak out as an individual citizen and let the councilors know that I'm not okay with this type of innovation. As a citizen of Albuquerque, I want to see innovation that recognizes the value in every human life in this city and empowers and adds capacity to every member of this community. And I want to see innovation that strengthens our ecosystems instead of destroying them. I'll finish, and this is a little bit of, maybe a radical statement, but I'll finish by saying that the people are sacred, the land is sacred, and we need to hold that near to our hearts as we proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Huber. Next is Steve Chavez, followed by Sally Beers, followed by Shorty Johns. Next is Steve Chavez. Is Mr. Chavez not in? Then we'll go to Sally Beers, followed by Shorty Johns, followed by Luke Resnick. Is Steve Chavez nor Sally Beers here? Next is Shorty Johns, followed by Luke Resnick, followed by David McCoy.
President Gardunio, Mr. Benton, I really appreciate your presence at Barellis Community Forum on Sunday. I'm here to speak also on behalf of the homeless situation at what is now called Camp Faith. I'm not going to read my prepared remarks because you've already addressed a lot of, of what we had concerns about. I guess the first thing I want to say is to Mr. Sanchez, although I understand you're trying to reach out with the offer of the jail, with a lot of the people, especially the people who are left at the, at Camp Faith, who don't really want that kind of traditional service going into a shelter or something like that, that might be like the last thing that they want, is to be in a facility like that. Although I do appreciate the suggestion. There were many suggestions that came up during the Barellis meeting, but the main thing I feel compelled to talk about tonight is, especially it being Ash Wednesday, is that the homeless are not the least among us, but they have the least among us. And that is to say that there were a lot of accusations made about the homeless community, that they're all drug addicts, that they all have crime problems. There were accusations made about pedophilia, sex crimes. And I can categorically say, having been down there and talked to these people myself, there are Vietnam vets down there, there are native indigenous people living down there. Even to this point, there are, there were some Cuban immigrants down there that are homeless because they can't find work. And there were people that were reaching out within the community to help these people out. Now, the reason I have this is because this is a donation for this gentleman right here. This gentleman's name is Ray Valdez. He himself is a homeless person who has no place to go tonight. So I hope the council will look upon him and realize that what we need now is a short-term solution. And we talked a lot about long-term solutions, but these people need help right now. And the city created a lot of the problem when they decided to feed rocks to the area along what used to be called Tent City, because it didn't need to be done right at that moment when it was done. It could have been delayed and provided a place for them to live until we had a long-term solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Shorty. Thanks for all the work you do, by the way. Next is Luke Resnick, followed by David McCoy, followed by Lila Saleem.
Good evening, councilors. I was at that meeting as well. I'm actually here to represent Barellis as an actual person who's been living there 20 years. And I agree wholeheartedly with everything that we're saying about needing the mental health services, the housing, all of that. We need that. And I want to tell you why the community was so infuriated with Tent City in our midst. The reason is, we've been dealing with a crime that is attracted to the exact location of Iron and Second Street, which is the Albuquerque Rescue Mission, but it's also known as drive-up drugs and prostitution, because everyone in the neighborhood knows that's where you go. knows that's where you go for anything. And everyone from the city has been using that for that exact purpose for so long. I'll tell you a personal story, so you can understand what I'm talking about. There was a homeless man who was mentally ill, and he was very nice, and I tried to help him, little jobs around the yard. But one day I came, I wasn't there, he came and he was in some kind of psychotic rage, and he broke down our front door with a rock, with my five-year-old child in there, with my wife in there, calling the police, the police not coming. They were trying to get a hold of me, no one could get a hold of me. It was so terrifying and so traumatic, and that's what we're talking about. We know that most of these people are probably fine, but you cannot have this incredible crime situation that attaches itself to the homeless population. So we, the neighborhood of Borellis, want a real solution. We don't really care moving the Tent City here, there. We want to focus on crime after this issue is over.
Thank you, Mr. Resnick. David McCoy, excuse me, Mr. Resnick?
You don't need to come down, Mr. Resnick, but thanks for coming down to speak. And I think when you bring up the rescue mission as a specific, you know, center of some of the activity, I think we often recognize that the service providers also have responsibilities, you know, as to how they operate. And not to single anybody out, but as an example of Brothers is a Good Shepherd, it's been a great neighborhood, neighbor to the community, as I understand it, to Borellis. And I've visited there, and I know they run a pretty tight ship, so I mean, they're not going to be able to provide services for some of the people. But the whole point of these service providers coordinating amongst themselves, but then also taking their own share of responsibility as to the consequences of how they operate their services, is hugely important. So thanks for coming down to speak.
Thank you, Councilor Benton. Mr. David McCoy, followed by Lila Saleem, followed by Sharon Cross. Mr. McCoy?
Good evening. I'm Dave McCoy, Executive Director for Citizen Action New Mexico. Numerous Sandia publications describe that nuclear fuel meltdown tests were conducted in the annular core research reactor at Sandia Labs. They used canisters that contained metallic sodium. Sandia Management Memoranda from 1997 through 2001, along with radioactive and hazardous waste disposal sheets, indicate that canisters containing sodium and high-level nuclear waste were processed in the hot cell facility and disposed of in the mixed-waste landfill. Sodium is an explosive metal in the presence of water. There is a potential that over time, the canisters will corrode, and the sodium in contact with moisture will explode. Breach the mixed-waste landfill's dirt cover and spread radiation from the canisters and other wastes in Albuquerque's air and groundwater. The clear issue is that the New Mexico Environment Department should order the excavation of these canisters thought to contain sodium and high-level radioactive waste. Now, if I had stood here two years ago and told you that there would be an explosion in the WIP facility, because they were trying to save a few pennies on kitty litter, nobody would have believed me. But I'm telling you, I have gone through two thousand, more than two thousand FOIA records showing proof of this. And this is a report that I've compiled over three months, so I want somebody to take it through the records.
Would the staff, please, take that? Thank you, Mr. McCoy.
That report is online, too. Are there any questions?
Councilor Benton.
Thanks, Mr. McCoy. Thanks for your years of work on it, on this and other issues that clearly affect the quality of our water, quality of health of people downstream of that dump, and other hazards that were created by the weapons of history.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
One thing I'd just like to add real quick, is that Sandia has lied to us. They told us for decades that this was low-level mixed-waste dump. It's not. It's got high-level nuclear mixed waste in it. Thank you.
Mr. McCoy, before you leave, Mr. McCoy, I, along with Councilor Benton, want to appreciate, I happen to be on the Water Authority Board, and for years, you've been the sometimes lone voice out there, talking about the fuel spill, talking about the issue you just brought up tonight. And I think now there's starting to be a cacophony of folks concerned about it. And I want to thank you for being not only diligent, but a stalwart. And thank you for educating me and many of the folks that need to be educated. Again, thank you, Mr. McCoy.
You're welcome.
Next is Lila Saleem, followed by Sharon Cross, followed by Linda Starr.
Good evening, Mr. President, councilors. My name is Lila Saleem, and I represent the Downtown Millennial Group. Last year, we met with the mayor and Decaparo Sabatini to discuss the Rio Grande vision. And we were largely in agreement with the essence of the mayor's vision, that the Bosque needs ecological restoration efforts, that it's a place we enjoy and want others to enjoy, that the more we use it, the more we'll care about it, and the more it will be cared for, and that low-impact improvements can be made to retain its natural quality. You should have my letter in front of you. Last Saturday, we held a cleanup event called I Heart the Bosque, where men and women spent the morning on Valentine's Day picking up trash and painting over graffiti. Like many others, we were alarmed to hear that construction was beginning to try to help me. To be clear, we're not against development. We want to see improved paths, educational signage, and careful ecological restoration. We recognize the Bosque's potential for tourism, generating economic development, and contributing to the attractiveness of Albuquerque. We believe it's one of the most unique features of our city, and an important amenity for millennials and others who choose to move here or remain here. Our generation values communication. We heard about the construction through viral social media, but we heard nothing from the city about why it was happening, without regard for the ongoing discussions. We feel that the political dialogue is often antiquated and polarized, and we want to see innovation in this area, communication. We have some ideas for better civic engagement, and we're already having a meeting with the Code for America team about that. Our generation also values honesty, and many of our peers are wary of government, and a lot of them don't even vote. And they're wary of the political process, because actions like those of last week reinforced this unfortunate distrust. So we urge you to restore the public process, and ensure that the rest of the project will be done in accordance with the knowledge and needs of all stakeholders. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Saleem. I just wanted to ask, I guess, so you're saying that you didn't find out about this until it had started, even though there had been discussions going, you know, backwards, if you will, until the social media alerted people?
Right. Well, social media was where almost everyone heard about it first on Tuesday.
So what does that say about every other kind of media?
Well, I think the rest of the media, there's some great op-eds in other places, but the Journal seems to be on the side of the administration and has provided no other perspective.
So after-the-fact reporting is not that great?
Not at all. And it hasn't actually given me explanations as to why the process was not upheld.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next is Sharon Cross, followed by Linda Starr, Sue Flint.
Hello, my name is Sharon Gross, and I was staff for the city council from 1974 to 1980, when it began. And I am here to speak about public trust, because I'm not on the Bosque Action Team, but I have been part of this process. And I am really disturbed because I want to trust the government, and it isn't working for me right now. And I think this is a bigger issue than just the Bosque. So I commented on the environmental monitoring statement in December, and it didn't have a scope of the project. It didn't, it wasn't precise. And I said, "How can you tell what the environmental impact is if you don't even know what the scope of the project is?" I went on the city's open space walk in January, and it was very educational. Again, there was no specific proposal put to me as a member of the public on the walk, but I saw some things on the walk. I saw two porcupines in a tree. The city open space staff said that it was really important for the regeneration of the cottonwoods, that we have wet areas. They also said that it was very important that we not disturb the riverfront, because that was the very sensitive area for the birds. And they talked about having access, but restoration and environmental conservation. And I think there was discussion of the fact that you can kill the Bosque by overdoing it. And if we destroy it, it's not going to be there. So I ask for rebuilding of public trust by supporting Council Benton's resolution and getting the public back into the process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Linda Starr, followed by Sue Flint, followed by our last speaker, Marsha McCann.
Hello, there, councilors. I'm Linda Starr, and I'm just speaking from the heart. I've lived in the South Valley for twenty-five years. I've lived in Albuquerque for forty years, over forty years. And I want to thank Mr. Benton for his resolution and for stopping construction, hopefully stopping construction in the Bosque. My son grew up along the Bosque. We picnicked along the Bosque. I've hiked probably a hundred miles along the Bosque, in different parts of it, with the Albuquerque Senior Centers hiking groups. And we enjoy looking at the birds, the wildlife, the porcupines, the occasional coyotes even, running through the Bosque. And I don't want to see nature suffer what it does for the sake of development along the Bosque. I think that nature is important for our spirits, for our hearts, and we cannot let this go and develop nature. So we need to appreciate what's there for our hearts, for our spirits. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda Starr. Next is Sue Flint, followed by our last speaker, Marsha McCann.
Good evening. I'm Sue Flint. I'm a homeowner and taxpayer at San North Estates. I'm here again after three years. Listening to everybody behind me speak about the Bosque, I think that everything they've said is correct, but I think common sense is what rules. And destroying the Bosque is something that is not acceptable to anybody, and especially not under plans that is strictly for development. This is a state park, this is a national treasury. Everybody knows the mayor is nothing but a commercial developer. The mayor and everything that he has done, when he was a state representative and up in the legislation, he was told, "No." He was not given money. He was told that these projections of 500,000 people that he just said on this, the overhaul ABQ's planning, 500,000 people are going to be here within twenty years. Well, God, I won't even be alive in twenty years, probably. But who is he to say that we start changing everything now, for twenty years from now? How does he know that's going to happen when we have no resources? We don't have any money, we don't have any jobs, yet he's ready to spend $1.5 million, with your backing, Councilwoman Jones and Mr. Benton, for planning to get rid of zoning and coding the way that it is? This is to cover their rear ends over what I have brought before you for three years. I spoke to Mr. Conrad and filed my third formal complaint with Mr. Brito, and I have given you every deductive argument that I have, which means my evidence is yours. It is public documents, it is public testimony. Mr. Winter, I asked him to step down, because he got redistrict. If I had given the Bacchus the information that I had on the redistricting and what this has done to this city, based on this administration, they would have won their lawsuit. Firstly, they would have had to get a good attorney, but they're all hired by the mayor at one point, so there's always a conflict of interest. This administration, and this planning department, and everything in it, needs to be stopped and looked at. And I, as today, spoke to the Attorney General, because I'm done with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flint. Our last speaker is Marsha McCann.
Good evening, Mr. President, Isaac Benton, and councilors. My name is Marsha McCann. I am from Borellis. There's been a lot of talk already about the Tent City, so I will leave that out of this and make it short and sweet. The only methadone clinic that I know of in Albuquerque is way out by the airport and not accessible. I would ask for one downtown. The drugs and problems in Tent City, those people need help. And after having worked in a methadone clinic, I know that they're not all bad. They have, they're human beings, and they have no resources. They're lost people. As far as Borellis goes, I think it should be declared under historic preservation. It's a beautiful old neighborhood, and at one time, I understand it was thriving, and it needs to thrive again. I also, you know, I'm all behind halfway housing, and also I would suggest a work-study program. There are all kinds of things that people can learn. I worked with developmentally-delayed people before. They have jobs, many of them who can't work. And I also understand that a substantial amount was cut that was slated for the Workforce Trust Fund. I was given the names of councilor, Louis Jones and Winter, who were asking for that cut. And I want it back. I think we need it, and we have a crisis in Borellis. And the last thing is, we're only as strong as our weakest link. These people need help.
Thank you.
And I don't believe that we can't get strong.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. At this point, everybody, I'm sure, is ready for some sustenance. So the council is going to be taking a thirty-minute dinner break. Thank you. We'll be back in thirty minutes.
First and foremost, we want a really robust, good POB. So almost all the reforms that are underway as a result of the DOJ settlement or agreement are coming out of the police budget, as I understand it, and this would, too. And the intent of this was to lessen the burden on the appointees. I'd be willing to consider an amendment where we change "shell" to "may," but I think we still need to work out something, we still need to, regardless, no matter what we do, have to work out something with how this would be implemented. But I do feel like it's going to be, it might be a deal killer with some of the people who agree to serve. In fact, there was some misunderstanding about some of the language in this bill, that we were adding these, and apparently the appointees weren't even aware of the level of training that they were going to be required. So open to thoughts on that, Council Jones.
Council Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Councilor Benton, I'd be more than happy to go ahead and vote on "may" offer, simply because I think the police academy may wish to not make it a two-day weekend, it may wish to make it one day or two weekends. So I think this is a bit explicit when we haven't checked with them, and we don't have the funding on it. So if we could change the "shell" to "may."
Yeah, I'm willing to do that.
Thank you, Councilor Benton.
Thank you. Councilor Benton, with the change, are you ready to move forward?
Yes. Unless there are any other questions, I would move these floor amendments to the bill, and can explain them, and municipal leaders can also explain them. But I'll move floor amendment number one.
I'm not sure that the floor sub was moved yet, so procedurally, which probably you got first, or voted on, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. It was moved, but not voted on. So we need to vote on the substitution.
Okay. If it moved, and second, excuse me, at the floor substitute, oh, 1538, be voted on. Those in favor say yes. Opposed, no. Councilor Benton? Council Benton.
Thank you. I'll move floor amendment number one. This says on page one, line 11, in search of following words, following between the words, or or may. And this has to do with the audit, which.
Has been moved and seconded. That has been noted. May will be substituted. Those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. That passes. Council Benton.
Thank you. I'll move floor amendment number three. This says on page three, line 13, amend the sentence beginning with POB members shall, as follows, POB members shall also participate in at least two police ride-alongs for every six months of service on the POB. This is, councilors, an increase from the base bill, but this puts it in direct.
Compliance.
Compliance with the DOJ agreement, just so that there's not any confusion. We would hope that if things change after the expiration of the agreement, that a future council might diminish this requirement if they felt necessary. But this current board is already going to be obligated to do this treatment.
Having heard the explanation, and it's been moved and seconded, those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. That passes. Thank you. Council Benton. FSR 99.
If there are any other questions from other councilors, otherwise I'll close.
Council Harris.
Yes, and I want to thank Council Benton for bringing this forward. I think I'm tepidly against the bill, but that's only because the Police Oversight Board hasn't really gotten up and running yet, and I'd almost like to hear their input on these changes. Are they going to have their first meeting here soon? And I wonder if we could do like a 30-day deferral and hear from them on if that's something that would be helpful or unnecessary.
Council Benton.
Well, as Mr. Melander said, we did offer all of these and made a point of offering these to each of the appointees, and so they've had a lot of time to respond. I'd rather, you know, my preference would be to get them started with clear direction from the council, and I think a lot of the concern, of course, was about the workload that they're going to be taking on, and this makes that very clear. I'd rather they get right down to business than to sit around debating council legislation.
Thank you, Council Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Have we heard from either, well, it's not actually, I guess she's the IRO until this week, or then she is the acting something. Have we heard from any specific concerns that haven't been addressed from either the members or the executive director? Is the executive director here?
Did you want to call her up? Council Harris.
And I'm not sure if that's even her title. Is it like IRO slash acting executive director, maybe, kind of?
Hi. Robin Hammer, acting executive director. I would just have concerns that the parts of the floor substitute which implement the DOJ mandated requirements, those requirements are already in place once the settlement agreement is adopted by the court. And so what this legislation would do would make those training requirements permanent unless and until council at a later date decides this extra training that's required by DOJ should be forever. Right now, the board members have been notified in person and writing of all of the training requirements, both in the current ordinance and under the DOJ, what those two bodies together of orders require them to do. So they're aware that they have to do that. But this legislation would make all of those training requirements forever unless and until it's reduced at a future date. So it's basically required by law pursuant to the federal court order, and this legislation would make it for the terms of the settlement agreement. So maybe in four years, when the settlement agreement presumably is suspended or taken off the table, then all this training isn't necessary.
I was wondering, we might not be able to do it on the fly. Is there an amendment that we could put in that said if the agreement changes that some of these requirements will?
Council Benton.
The putting this in direct concert with the agreement was a recommendation of Mr. Greenwood, that's why I did these specific amendments, and which we did share all of them with Ms. Hammer.
And my second and last concern is regarding the requirement that each complainant who comes to the board members be given five minutes of time to discuss individual complaints that they file against the police department, which somewhat flies against the policy of requiring the board to spend at least 51% of their time looking at policy issues. It was one of the big complaints against the prior Police Oversight Commission, that they wanted to spend a lot of their time looking at individual complaints, which are typically driving complaints or demeanor complaints. Serious use of forces are not brought before the Police Oversight Board or this agency because those are dealt through, typically through civil lawsuits. And so things of serious nature are not the bread and butter of any police oversight agency. But this requiring complainants to be given five minutes sort of takes away from control of the board, how they spend their time, when it is, they are permitted, anyone's permitted to speak on any agenda item.
And Ms. Hammer, could the chair give five minutes if the chair wanted to?
Sure. Like it's just like any other meeting, the Roberts Rules of Order apply.
Not sure if the sponsor would agree to a friendly amendment to, no.
We're back on the bill.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hammer. Those in favor say yes. Opposed, no. That fails on a two to one. Those in favor say yes. Yes. Opposed, no. That passes on a, somebody do the math quick, 62 vote. Thank you. I am going to use the president's prerogative and move R. 169 to be heard next. R. 169, Council Benton, is your legislation.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Council Sanchez is co-sponsoring this legislation. I'll move, this is R. 169, required to see if Albuquerque can immediately seize construction of the Rio Grande Bosque between Central and I-40, amending adopt the COPO improvement program by approving new projects and changing the scope of existing projects. I know they do pass.
Has been moved and seconded. We do have folks signed up to speak. I think we'll go to that now, and I'll call out three names, and please come up, be ready to speak. First person is Rob Chavez. I don't see Mr. Chavez. Oh, I see. Rob, please. Next is Tabitha Bennett, Maya Libowitz.
I pretty much said what I wanted to say earlier, but I just wanted to reiterate that I think that the process is broken. And I think that what has occurred regarding the Bosque and the interaction of the city officials with the community is sort of a metaphor for some of the other issues that have come up, like the Camp Faith and so forth, is that for whatever reason, the many city officials seem to feel that the community is here at the pleasure of those officials and those departments, and obviously it's just the opposite. You know, they're the servants of the public. And so I would just hope that all of you on the council would strongly consider passing this bill because I think that regardless of the fine tuning about the funds that would be transferred and so forth, this process at the Bosque has to stop now. It is just untenable. Whatever you think of the long-term plans that the mayor has projected and so forth, that it is just, not only because people are dissatisfied with it, but it is really repeating in a different way some of the things that went wrong with San Gabriel Park before the Biopark was brought in, is that a problem was discovered there, that the park was perhaps not doing that well, and people were not given the input. I don't know if my time is up or, all right. Well, I'll just leave it at that, and I just hope that even those that maybe have thought about voting against this would reconsider for the sake of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. Next is Tabitha Bennett, followed by Maya Libowitz, followed by Sandria Cook.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, councilors. My name is Tabitha Bennett. I grew up along the Bosque in the South Valley. I've since moved to the West Side now in Council Penya's district, just a couple miles up central from the proposed changes to the Bosque plan here. The Bosque has been my refuge. It's been a quiet place within the crazy city that I can go to. During the monsoons last year and the floods, I was actually running the trails of the Bosque before the weather hit us. I was actually in the Bosque frightened and overwhelmed as we got one of the biggest floods that we've had in many years. What I witnessed is that the area that was carved out, the more man-made path, flooded completely and quickly. The footpaths, the smaller areas, the two to three-foot wide paths, were able to flood in a slower pace, were able to fill with water, and were able to get their way towards the river. This is a very sensitive ecological area. I've been involved in the plan and been at the other meetings since 2013, and probably online since before that. I was assured at many points in the process that a full environmental impact study would be conducted and would be published. I was assured at many points in the process that public comment would be included in the publishing. I thank you, Council Benton and Council Sanchez, for introducing this resolution tonight to cease continued construction until what I was assured is actually come to fruition. So I do ask councilors that you do support this resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Next is Maya Libowitz, followed by Sandria Cook, followed by Sheila Pugash. No, I don't see Maya, Maya Libowitz. If not, then please, Sandria Cook, followed by Sheila Pugash, followed by Merritt Tully.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Benton, for putting forth this resolution. My name is Sandria Cook. I have lived by the river and the Bosque for over 20 years. I have followed this issue for some time since that overwhelming meeting in 2013. I do not agree with the mayor's vision. The mayor has said he's wanted public comment, but his actions this past week has showed a lack of respect for that comment. The Rio Grande Bosque is a fragile riven of nature that needs our protection and our respect because of the lack of rainfall, because of the lack of snowmelt, and human demands on this system. We need to be putting more into restoring it. It's what allows us to live in this city. It's what makes this city livable, not just for our hearts, but for our physical bodies. We need the water. So we need to put our money and our actions into the science of the river. We need to put the money and the actions into restoring the river. We need to stop the machines, listen to the science and the people. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sandria Cook. Next is Sheila Pugash, followed by Merritt Tully.
Hi. Mr. President, city councilors, I'm Sheila Pugash. I have written to you on a number of issues, so this is me. I'm not going to repeat a lot of what has already been said on the Bosque, but I wanted to tell you just my personal situation. I have a serious back problem. I used to go down to the nature center more regularly. I can't do that anymore. But what I'm telling you now is that I support the Bosque, even though I do not use it. And I think there are a lot of people who agree with me and who would support stopping this blading of these sensitive areas of the Bosque, even though they may not be using it. And as I said, I cannot physically use it anymore, but I certainly suppose, support Council Benton's proposal. I am also very upset that the relationship of the mayor's office with the community has been eroded. I think it's very important for you, councilors, to reestablish at least your own relationship to the community. It's both on the Bosque, it's on Tent City, it's on many, many issues, and you need to get the support and retain the support of the community. I don't know if the mayor can reestablish it or not. Something as sensitive as the Bosque, I'm not sure if we can reestablish those areas. Many, many years ago, the Bosque's path, the river's path in the Bosque was changed, and because of that, it affected the cottonwoods, it affected the whole ecosystem. The river's path cannot be put back where it was, I think it was in the '40s or early '50s. We can't undo that. And I'm concerned that we may not be able to undo what the mayor has already done. But maybe we can. I don't know. But I hope that you, as the city councilors, will go ahead and reestablish the community support for the Bosque and for your relationship. Thank you.
That was the last speaker. Ms. Merritt Tully signed up for another, but I think she's speaking for another. Ms. Tully, is that correct?
You bet.
Thank you. Well, that being the last speaker, it's back on the desk, Council Benton. And sorry for this sexy voice.
I'll hold back until other councilors may wish to speak, and I'll close, but I will just quickly say that I really do regret having to bring forth this legislation, and it is about, it is intended to reestablish the dialogue and rebuild public trust. Certainly, if it were to pass, then I stand ready to work with the administration. We've already got a project that's half complete or maybe more than half, but I think we could regroup if we were to pass this, and the council could make sure we've got appropriate resources dedicated to.
Thank you, Council Benton. Back on the desk for discussion, Council Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've heard a great deal of opposition and a little bit in favor, but I would like to hear what the administration has to say about this. Mr. Riordan or Parks and Rec or whoever would like to say something.
Thank you, Council Jones. Mr. Riordan.
Mr. President and Council Jones, thanks for the opportunity to discuss the administration's point on this. I think from tonight you can hear and from the emails that we received, both positive and negative about this project, is there's two sets of concerns. One is on the project, and I just want to be clear with everybody what it is. It is a bobcat down there. It is not a bulldozer, no matter how glorified the opposition wants to make it. It is a bobcat. It is a six-foot-wide trail. It is, currently has base course on it now, there will be crusher finds over that. This is what, this is what exists in the Bosque today. It's hard to tell the difference of the two pictures. The top one is an existing foot-traveled trail. The bottom one is a crusher find trail that exists in the Bosque today that's been worked that was done by the Rio Grande Nature Centers. So what the Bosque is going to get is what's shown on the bottom, which you can see blends in very well with the surrounding area. And part of the project, again, that was discussed in the environmental document that the city delayed this project for one year, this time last year, to do an environmental document done by SWCA, nationally recognized environmental consulting firm. The project that was in that report, as you can see right here, it's in that report, page six of the report. The yellow line is the primary trail that they identified in their report as studying. We actually, because of the discussion that happened on this in the public comment period that was for 45 days after this was published on October 30th, was set aside, we actually adjusted the trail to be even further away from the river, in this location, come up on the pink line here, to get it, to become further away from the river in some of the areas, and again, followed an existing foot trail that's in the Bosque with this primary trail. Part of this project will also be signage that we want to to say, stay on this trail, and be able to remove so many of the spaghetti or the unauthorized accesses down to the river. It was very obvious from these aerial photos that people are trying to get to the river. If we have one location on one trail, on a location to get down the river, we're going to be able to restore those areas that are so sensitive to our Bosque and what the mayor finds is so sensitive and wants to be a steward for the Bosque. I think everybody says they want to do that. We're trying to implement a plan that does that. The second part of this is the process, and I think it's well documented on the two and a half years that we've spent with the community, with the Bosque Action Team, with special meetings specifically for them, special meetings for the general public, over thirteen public meetings with interest groups, including Sierra Club, meetings in the mayor's office with the Sierra Club, Bosque Action Team. I'm going to stand for you and apologize if this last two weeks did not go as well on the public notification side as it should have. We've become into this at the end of it, but what I want to say is this project, this alignment that you see in the study, has been what's been in front of the public now for over a year. And when we say we're two weeks away from consensus, or two days, or two hours, again, that all matters. August 1st, we need to be out of the Bosque with our equipment, and that's what we needed to do. The people that oppose this project knew that, and if it was delayed another two weeks, we were going to be delayed for a full year again. So based on this report, we wanted to be down in the Bosque. We wanted to get this trail work done, to be stewards of the Bosque, and that's why we're there.
Councilor Jones.
Thank you, Councilor Gardino. One, Mr. Riordan, I've been asking a question. So one of the citizens said before that they were promised an environmental impact study, but that was never done, never reported. Is this study that you are referring to by SWCA an environmental impact study?
Counselor, President Gardino and Counselor Jones, yes, it is.
And it was available to the public?
On October 30th of 2014, it was published. We originally had a thirty-day comment period. Based on the comments we received, we extended that to a forty-five-day comment period, and then following that, we then did two walkthroughs of the Bosque with this action plan and with these alignments that you see in the report as part of the walkthrough.
Thank you, Mr. Riordan.
Councilor Jones, thank you. Councilor Penya.
Thank you, Mr. Riordan. I actually wanted to, you know, my, Mr. President, I'd like you to call people back up.
I thought I pressed it, sorry. Would you mind?
No, no, no. Go ahead.
You can stay, too, if you want.
Ms. Pfeebelmann, without going into much detail, because I know public comment is over, but I just wanted to ask you, just because I think you guys were so close to completion and really getting a good product out of this, and a lot of the things that he's discussing are things that you guys have already agreed to, from my understanding. Is it the desire of your group or groups to actually see that the trails are improved and to see that we have Bosque restoration?
Absolutely. That's our principal reason for being. Our reason for being is to see the sensitive areas of the Bosque restored, trails that have been open, sort of informally be closed, that certain wide trails that exist previously be made smaller, and in the places where it's appropriate, connecting pieces of trails that are already in existence. So we believe in having a more formal trail system for the Bosque. We just believe in culminating the public process.
That's great. So that's my understanding. So you do realize, though, with this, I have some heartburn over this resolution because of the fact that it actually guts that money. It takes it and puts it to open space, and so there wouldn't be any of those dollars available.
Actually, it's my understanding, and I'll ask Mr. President and Mr. Counselor Benton to correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe that there's a special pot specifically for restoration while this money has been used to hire contractors, and I should describe them as landscape contractors to build this six-foot-wide with eight-foot-wide base trail. Councilor Penya, could I also possibly clarify the environmental study that was done?
Actually, we're done with, Mr. President. That would be up to our president.
Okay, sure. Did I answer your question?
You did. You did. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Penya. Any other questions? Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you. I have a couple of comments and maybe a question for Mr. Riordan. You made the statement that we all need to be good stewards of the Bosque, and I'm glad to hear that. But I'm very disturbed that on October 13th of 2013, there were over four hundred people at a meeting that objected to what was going on with the Bosque. Tabitha Bennett and hundreds of other people were told that they would have an opportunity to voice their opinion. This project, and you've apologized tonight because of this being cut short, if it takes an extra twelve months to get this work done, the key is getting the public trust and transparency on this very important issue. I had legislation that passed this council on a five-to-four vote, but failed in a veto override by this council. I just think this is too important of an issue to rush and get this project done because those dollars are available today. When you've got over four hundred people and probably thousands of people that want to make sure that we are good stewards of the Bosque and that we protect the second-largest cottonwood forest in the world and the largest cottonwood forest in America, I think we've got to proceed slowly and do this right if we're going to do it. But most importantly, I think the public trust is the most vital component of this, and there are hundreds of people that are extremely concerned by the decision of the mayor. This was delayed during an election year, where there was no more public hearings or meetings for a long time until after the election. I mean, the public needs to be engaged in this, and now a year's gone by, the mayor's been in office for a while. Let's involve the public. Let's involve this community in making the right decisions for the Bosque. You know, there are hundreds of people that have worked decades to assure that we preserve the most precious treasure that we have in our city, and that's the Rio Grande Bosque.
Excuse me.
Mr. President and Counselor Sanchez, during that year that we delayed this project, during the environmental study, I just want to read some of the conclusion from that. "The project would improve the environmental conditions of the Bosque by managing visitors to allow recovery from prior impacts." The project is also in agreement with a recommendation from several key middle Rio Grande Bosque natural resource management plans, including the Middle Rio Grande Ecosystem Bosque Biological Plan, Bosque Action Plan, and the Rio Grande Conservative Initiative. We have gone through every public process, heard from every public person that wanted to give an opinion on this project, and the year that we took to delay this project up to this point has proven that this project is a good steward of the Bosque, is needed for the Bosque, and is in cooperation with all the plans that we have today. We've also received a lot of input that I'm not sure is getting to the council, because they can't necessarily be here tonight, but we've got documents from the National Park Service Trails Plan, I think I left it on my desk over there, on their support of this project. So we've got, when we're talking about our partners in the Bosque, and how many people manage that and make sure that that resource stays available to the public, we're cooperating with MRGCD. We're cooperating with the National Parks Trail Service. So, a quote from them, "As a clear trail specialist, I believe their approach taken by the city is appropriate and the least detrimental to the Bosque habitat. I ask the city council not to play some moratorium on this Bosque trail construction." That's from the person that runs the National Park Service Rivers and Trails Program within our region. We've got community support for this. I understand the passionate people that are out here tonight that do not want any development whatsoever in this Bosque, but the truth is, the environmental specialists and the groups that we work with say that this is best for the Bosque. It's time to have the project go.
Councilor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Riordan, when did you first start doing public hearings? I know this has changed a lot. At one time, we were talking about Riverwalk, restaurants, all of that stuff. Where are we now, and when did you first, what is the plan now? If, this is a multi-tiered question, so first question is, I know it started out as a totally different thing. What is the plan now? Is it just this one trail? What else? And then I'm going to ask you, if you want to fill that in, when did you first start having meetings? How many total meetings have you had on this particular project, and over what period?
President Gardino and Counselor Jones, the first option of this, or the first public discussion, was what would you like your Bosque to be? And that really set it off on a negative trail, because people came up with all sorts of ideas, restaurants and boardwalks, and that was never really the vision. That was just people saying, this is what they would like to see, some people. When it got narrowed down to the mayor's vision and what the project is that we put in the environmental document, that was this trail system. That started in 2012 with a stakeholder committee. That started with defining what that trail would look like. We began public outreach in late 2012. Then through 2013 and 2014, we held thirteen public meetings, two public meetings specifically with the Bosque Action Team, four educational forums, two walking tours specifically with the Bosque Action Team. The Rio Grande Valley State Park Environmental Baseline Report was conducted in that time, and then just recently in January, we had the two additional walking tours that talked about the study and the alignment that's in there. So you're in the range of twenty-five to thirty public meetings over the last two and a half years?
Mr. President, if I may?
Please.
So that takes care of this particular. Is the city planning at this point in time, is this a part of this plan to do anything other than improving this trail? What is the total plan?
President Gardino and Counselor Jones, this is the first phase of what the entire Bosque plan is supposed to look like. So right now, we are funded for and implementing between Central and I-40. So that's to get a pilot project in the ground, so everyone can see what this is going to be, and then we can have further public meetings about how further north we go within the Bosque Trail at that point. So this was always identified as the first phase. In the report, it identifies the entire Bosque.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Riordan?
Counselor Jones.
Will all of the additional trails be this wide? Are they narrow? Is this the prototype for all the trails? Where are we going with this?
President Gardino and Counselor Jones, this was the compromise that we came up with for this section. Again, we're starting with a ten-foot trail. If you talk to ADA-accessible people, they'd want an asphalt trail. So we're trying to find, again, a compromise that's not an asphalt trail going through the Bosque, that the Bosque Trail is itself on top of the berm. So that's what this section is, six-foot-wide in this section. As we wanted to go north, we would talk to the stakeholders again.
Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Riordan. And you said something earlier, and I'd like for folks who are watching on TV, because I didn't really realize this until I started studying it, but you referred to the Bosque as a man-made environment, something like that. Could you explain what you meant by that?
President Gardino and Counselor Harris, in the document, and as we know, the Bosque itself, the river is a very natural environment, has been here for a long time. The berms of that area that was now incorporate the Bosque was a man-made infrastructure improvement project in order to control the waters of the US within the riverbanks that it is now. So the area between the river and the berm is actually a man-made improvement for the city. Now, it's become one of our most glorious places to visit and natural environment, but it was originally a man-made area.
And I'm also, was told, and maybe other people could talk about this, if you don't know, but, I mean, until the Cochise Dam was built, the whole area would flood. We didn't have a cottonwood forest because it'd be washed away. We had some cottonwood trees and some meadows, very wide. And now we have kind of a narrower Bosque, which is now this cottonwood forest, which is actually something that we created. I mean, is that your understanding?
Mr. President, Counselor Harris, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselors, Mr. Riordan, before you leave, let me just ask. I know that you just delineated the fact that the Bosque is a man-made, or that's sort of what was part of the discussion, that it was a man-made estuary, or passageway, or cottonwood growth. The Bosque's been there for millennia. The borders, levees, whatever, have been manipulated. Jetty-jacks and all kinds of things have been put in there by man, which have destroyed the Bosque. We're trying to re-destruction something that's as natural as we're going to get at this point, but for us to say that that's a man-made area is just not true. For many, many years, way before we were around, it's documented through oral history that indigenous folks talked about the Bosque, talked about where hunting was best, where some of the now nonexistent pueblos used to come down to the river to subsist, to live off of. I don't think they ever envisioned a paved ADA, you know, accessible path. I think what they were talking about is the wildness of the river. In the early '40s, when people decided that jetty-jacks were a good idea to control the river, is when we started destroying that very path of that wild river. And if you, well, folks that are my age can remember when downtown would get underwater. That was not the fault of the river. That was the fault of us dumb folk who built in a floodplain and then tried to change it to make the wild river to some kind of tame pathway. We're trying to save it to as wild an extent as we can, but to now say what we need to do is control people using it, I think it's going the wrong direction. I think we need to listen to folks and say, look, we have something as wild as we're going to get right now, because we have retrograded, if you will. We have taken out some really bad things we've done, and let's make sure that we don't put other bad things in, in the name of accessibility, people's ability to walk into that river basin. I think we just need to leave it alone. And to say that the Bosque wasn't there some time back is just not true. It's misleading. The Bosque has been there forever. That forest, that network of trees, which is a grove, has been there forever. And what I mean forever, I don't mean, you know, the length of the country being around or humanity being here. I'm talking about forever. And now, I don't know why we think that we can improve on what's something as natural, is something that we should enjoy rather than try to control. That said, I think we need to make sure that at the very least, we protect what we have now, rather than try to improve it, because we're not going to. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I could respond to that, because we have an environmental document that says by doing this trail system, we are going to protect the Bosque. That's what cannot be ignored, and those are the people that have studied this environment and can give us an honest opinion of what can be best for the Bosque. When this trail's going in, and everyone can have an opinion, whether the trail is good or bad, just don't use the plight that this was not a clear, public process, transparent, for two and a half years, as a reason to go against it. If you're against having a trail on the Bosque, state it that way. Do not state that it's because of the process. The process was filled two and a half years of public input onto this through environmental documentation, and the project has started, blessed by the council when its funding was passed for this. So we're asking to revert that now, as part of this action on this bill, and I'm disappointed.
The way I understand it is what we're asking is for time for not only reflection, but for study. You know, I know that you have probably your folks that you want to cite, and I, on the other hand, have some folks that I can cite that would have an honest disagreement, but I don't think that, I want to say that my side is absolutely correct and the other side is absolutely wrong, but at this point, I think we're, both sides are not willing to work together, and that's the problem. Counselor Benton.
Well, you know, here's my understanding of where we were, and I think I said this in the paper. My impression was we were this close, or not we, I was guiding this, and I wasn't advising anyone as to how it evolved, but my sense was we were this close to agreement between the administration's concepts and those of the advocates that are here tonight. And I really, to me, it's sort of a red herring to go back and talk about why we need to do some things down there. I agree. I think everybody, I think everyone agrees that the limitation of the spaghetti system of ad hoc trails and all of that needed to be gotten under control. And that's not the point. You know, the editorial in the Journal today, I think, makes most of the administration's points, but it sort of takes the arguments for preserving the Bosque and turn them on their head in order to justify this, as you say, months and months of good give and take and public process that then suddenly... then suddenly, apparently, the mayor ran out of patience. So, um, if that's what it is, and that was the impression I got, then just say that. But, but, you know, the journal's citing, uh, you know, the Bosque being loved to death and trampled and so forth, and, and everybody agrees with that. That's not the reason to jump on this right now. The, the journal also, their editorial, talks about, uh, you know, the spring bird nesting season. Yeah, we all acknowledge that it's, it's coming upon us, the spring bird net, nesting season. But to me, that's been used as a, as a, uh, an excuse to just ramrod this thing forward. Um, you know, the goal of rehabilitating the Bosque is to get humans to use the trail and not trample on adjacent habitat. It reminds me of other arguments where, where the journal and other people, you know, take, take an argument that's being, that everyone agrees on and uses it as a justification for rash decision-making. So, uh, I personally, um, I think based on where we stand right now, and I think many people in the community, and I think the letter from Albuquerque Millennials really, uh, says this very well, but the concern is trust. And so, if we say, "Okay, this is all right, and then we're gonna go on to phase two," I'm, I'm not prepared to support phase two, and that's why, why this would remove the funding, at least temporarily, uh, and so we can get back into a dialogue. And that's, removing the funding's the only way the council can weigh in on this, really. We could say what we want. We've said it a couple of times already, and it's been ignored. So, uh, you know, this, this is the time to, uh, go ahead and pull the funding until we can have an actual discussion about where we go from here. And if that means people out there with hand tools restoring what's, the damage that's been done right now, which as a regular user of the Bosque, I'll tell you, a developed trail right up against the riverbank is wrong. Um, the riverbank erodes and comes and goes and moves in and out based on the flow of the river. And anybody who's walked along that trail, that, that ad hoc trail that goes right along the, the river now, that's about this wide, uh, if they've experienced different times of year, they'll, the trail disappeared because the whole bank is caved in. So, we're gonna put a developed, you know, developed engineered path right against that, and it just doesn't make sense. Um, but just going back quickly to the Millennials' letter, and these are the people we want to keep here. These are the people, the next generation, the people that are gonna be here after we're all, not on this council anymore. And the people that we're trying to, to bring, keep in the city and bring to the city, because they're the ones that are, that are the innovators and, and the rebuilders of, of new communities. And, and their letter is, I thought, very well-written, and I think they read some of it, but just, "We consider the, the Bosque to be an important amenity for Millennials and others, uh, who choose to move here or remain here, but we want to see careful, careful conservation and restoration of the ecosystem of the Bosque. Our generation values communication. We believe that the political dialogue is often antiquated and polarized, and we want to see innovation in this area. Our generation also values honesty. Many of our peers are wary of government." And these are the people who are really active. They're not wary, they're not cynical. They're people out there, um, trying to, trying to build a, a fiber in Albuquerque. "Our generation also values honesty. Many of our peers are wary of government and the political process, and it's actions like those of last week that reinforce this unfortunate distrust. Thus, we urge Mayor Berry and the city council to act to win back our trust. Please restore the public process." That's all this is about. Uh, it's not about stopping everything and not doing these good things that we need to do in the Bosque. Um, there are things that need to be done in the Bosque, clearly, to protect habitat, restore natural habitat and so forth, but, um, this kind of construction without final, you know, just final buy-in from the people who, who have been part of that process now for months and months and months, just doesn't seem to make sense. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Benton?
We have a, a, an amendment on the floor, moved in second, and suggest we go ahead and move on that. I'm prepared to, to, uh, take that route of setting aside the funds as opposed to re-appropriating it to the open space. Uh, I think the whole idea of trying to set some timeline just is, is not practical. I think if, if we were to pass this, then as a council, we are committing to, uh, entering into a discussion, and, and my sense is, uh, yeah, of course, there're gonna be people who, uh, didn't want anything done and, and never will. And, but there're also people out here who spoke tonight, have been working some time, and back and forth, give and take with, with the administration, have agreed to a general direction of where it was going, uh, before, uh, this, uh, the unilateral action that was taken by the administration. So, I'd like to go ahead and move beyond this. Um, as to the timing, I think we might be able to do, uh, an agreement, come to an agreement fairly quickly. The question would be, the construction, you know, what's the construction schedule? Because that is, there is obviously environmental concerns about the, uh, construction schedule, so I'd like to vote on that amendment.
Thank you, Counselor Benton. Counselor Sanchez, I myself would like a bit of clarity, and could we have the amendment, at least in general terms, or maybe specifically, read again so that we understand what we're voting on?
Mr. President, I'd be glad to.
Thank you, Mrs. Ammon. Uh, council satisfied with that amendment? Understand it? If that's the case, Counselor Jones.
Thank you. May I ask the sponsors, please, if there, is their intent, if this amendment is, is approved, that it will, they will move forward this, this resolution?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that being agreed to, has been moved, excuse me, it's been moved in second that we move forward with the amendment. Uh, do we need to accept the amendment first or just as part of the?
Mr. President, we need to vote on the amendment.
Okay, so we're now on the amendment. Those in favor of the amendment as read, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
No? Goodness. It's our first. Now, I think so. Uh, we'll have a show of hands just to make sure. Those, those in favor say yes and raise your hand. Those opposed, no and raise your hand? No. Somebody record that. Um, that passes on a seven, uh, six to two vote. Um, we're now back on the bill, as amended. Counselor Sanchez, Counselor Benton, um, we're now on the bill. Those in favor say yes?
Yes.
And raise your hands. Opposed, no?
No.
And raise your hands. I don't know what we have. Yeah. Those in favor say yes and raise your hands?
Yes.
It tricked you. Those opposed, no and raise your hand. One, two, three. So, it's five, three, that passes. Okay. We are now on B, final actions. Counselor Benton, R ninety-nine.